I'm gonna call the November tenth, twenty twenty regularly scheduled meeting of the Sims Berry Planning Commission to order. And just give me a second to share my screen. And all who are able, please join and rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next, take the roll call. Commissioner, if you are here, please signify by saying I am here, whatever you please. Holly Ben. I see you, Holly, but I don't hear you.
Unmute, Holly.
Yeah.
All right, here.
Okay, David Blumey.
Here, I'm in the witness protection plan. I can't get my camera to work yet.
Okay. Aaron Levitt Smith.
Here.
Greg McCormack.
Here.
Alan Needham.
Here.
And William Rice, I am here. And our alternates, Richard Cortez.
Here.
Hello, Rich. Julie Eaton. Hi, Julie. Okay, so we have our full full group of regular commissioners tonight, so there will not be a need to appoint alternates to fill a seat. However, when we get to the public listening session, although it is designed for us to hear from members of the public, unseated commissioners can also comment if they'd like. It's not, not, it's not a public hearing per se. All right, so I know that we have a number of guests with us tonight, as well as a couple of written statements that need to be read into the record. So I'd like to make a motion to move the approval of our minutes from the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting to follow the public workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the proposal or the, the motion to move the approval of the minutes to follow the public workshop, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on our agenda then will be the public workshop that is related to the Affordable Housing Plan that the Sims Berry Planning Commission has been drafting. Two weeks ago, we had a, a listening session. We call it a listening session because we want to hear what you, members of the public, have to say to us. We don't, we don't want this to be a debate. We are just looking for information that we could use in our decision-making process to finalize the Affordable Housing Plan. So what I'd like to do is, Mike Glidden, do you have that presentation handy that you used last time?
I could pull it up and give me two seconds.
Okay, I think, I think it's a good introduction, so everyone's on the same page when we start the, the, the listening session. And after Mike presents the few slides he has, I'll, I'll ask him to then read into the, the record the written statements or comments that we have received. And then we'll move into, let's call it our live discussion. And the last information I have shows that we have ten people that want to share their views with us. I have, I have it in order. And I think I'll just go down the list and let me, we just say who the people are now, kind of in order, so you can be prepared. Keep in mind that we'd like to keep the comments to roughly no more than five minutes per person. If we do find that you could use a little more time, we're more than happy to kind of have you wait until everyone else has their opportunity to speak, and then you can follow up with whatever continuation you'd like. So when we do get to the section, let's see, and I apologize if I pronounce any names incorrectly. I'll try my best. We'll start out with Kristen Morrow, followed by Kevin Kurian, and then Robert Patrachelli, Ellen Cresco, Wendy Maxtoudis, Akash Kaza, Danielle Hill, Mario Trupetti, Nancy Yama Pulis. How'd I do?
Yanopoulos.
Yanopoulos?
Yanopoulos.
Okay, I apologize. And then the last that I have on the list here is Shannon Knoll. Not sure if there are any people added after this list, but we can, we can deal with that if we, if we get to it. Okay, Mike, I bought you a little time. Great.
Okay, could you hear me?
Yes.
Make sure. Just want to make sure I'm on mute. Okay, so I'll just go over briefly the Affordable Housing Plan. So what, why are we here? The Connecticut General Statute eight S thirty J requires that each community develop an affordable housing plan. Now, this plan is supposed to illustrate how specifically the community will increase the total number of affordable housing units in their, in each town. This plan is required to be updated every five years. This is a new law. It just came to effect in two thousand and seventeen with a this would be the first affordable housing plan for Sims Berry. The other statute that really comes into play when we're taught, when we're discussing affordable housing, eight dash thirty G of general state statutes, which is the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. This basically, one of the, one of the things that says that all communities in Connecticut must have ten percent of their total housing stock deemed to be as quote-unquote affordable housing, and I'll explain what that means later. Communities that fail to provide ten percent of their housing stock as what's considered affordable are subject to Affordable Housing Appeals. Basically, these are affordable housing developments that local regulations do not apply. And the intent is that, that these are developments which will increase affordable housing. Because they have some, some set-asides that are required, that's deed-restricted units. So what is affordable housing? Well, the statute kind of gives, from eight thirty G's perspective, there's a few categories that go into affordable housing. One of the, and I'll talk later about incomes, but there's three, three types that really get points towards your, your ten percent. One is that the unit is protected by a deed restriction that limits the, the sale or resale price of the home for a period of thirty years. The other is the individuals living there receive some sort of assistance, meaning they have a USDA loan, or they have a Connecticut Financing Authority loan. Lastly, is the rental assistance such as Section Eight, which we do have, we have some people in Sims Berry that receive this assistance. All these go to a point system, and that's how you get, you determine whether your housing stock meets the required ten, ten percent set aside. So when, when we're talking eight thirty J, and, and someone says, what does it mean that a home's price is affordable? It means that the household income that there, they are, will not exceed thirty percent of their household income towards housing costs. This means your mortgage payment or rent, utilities, HOA fees, et cetera. Put all that, all it together, it cannot exceed a greater than thirty percent of the income for the household. And so what the two, the two numbers that eight thirty G looks at for incomes is eighty percent of what's, what's considered the area median income for the, and we're in the West Hartford, East Hartford metro area, that, and these, these are numbers that are provided by HUD, which are updated on a regular basis. The other is the sixty percent, individuals making sixty percent. So, so in the sense of eight thirty G, if it's a deed-restricted unit, those are the two segments that, that statute is looking at. And the intent of this statute was to provide entry-level housing to individuals in different economic means to eat to different markets. So where do we stand right now? Sims Berry is, is below five percent. We're at four, four point seven four. I'm sorry, there's a typo in this. It's, it says four seven four, uh, four point four seven. It's four seven four. Out of the required ten percent, meaning in order for us to get to ten percent right now, we would have to add a, a, a total of four hundred and eighty-one new affordable units, or we would have to have units that, that they'll be considered affordable under eight thirty G, which there's a different, there's all kinds of different ways, as I said earlier. It's a number, I mean, we're not gonna, and, and the other thing too is, is that four eighty-one means we cannot approve a single market rate unit in order to get to ten percent. The only thing we can develop is affordable housing throughout, throughout the town of Sims Berry. That's just eight thirty G speaking. So, so as I said earlier, you know, the eight thirty J requires that the community basically develop a plan that you show how you're going to increase the total number of affordable units and in residential units within the town. The planning commission discussed this, and one of, the goal of this plan is over the next five years, we are going to increase the total number of affordable units by one percent, meaning we're going to add ninety affordable units in town. And there's several kind of actions that are on pages ten through twelve that kind of highlight how are we going to get to that one percent over the next five years? So Bill kind of already hit on this, but really the, the commission is looking for input from the, from the public tonight on the goals, on some of the, the actions that are shown in the plan, or the importance of affordable housing as, as it's defined by the plan and by statute, because I, I just want to emphasize we're, we're creatures of statute and we're bound by statute in this one. After tonight, we're, we're going to take in everything we hear, and we're going to see how we can incorporate it into our plans. But like I said, we're going to kind of, we're bound by statutes, so we're really going to look at it through the context of statute. And that's it for, for me. And I will pull up our comments now.
Thank you, Mike.
So you, your first comment is from George Harris. Dear members of the, of the Sims Berry Planning Commission, I write as Senior Minister for First Church of Christ in Sims Berry, and perhaps more importantly, as a proud resident of Sims Berry, to communicate my support for more truly affordable housing in our town. I'm not qualified to wade into the technical details of the issue, though some of our church members are doing the necessary work to understand all the public policy requirements and implications. Rather, as a minister, I write in support of affordable housing as a moral issue. While I have a privilege of serving First Church for the past five years, much of my experience in ministry has been serving lower-income populations. I've come to know and love many good, hard-working people who, because of limitations of poverty, they were born in significantly disadvantaged in many ways. But despite stereotypes, the contrary, I found the great majority of these people to be good citizens committed to the better lives for themselves and their children, and I've heard in the biggest detriment of a child's success in school and in life is their zip code. Having a meaningful supply of affordable housing in Sims Berry would change the lives of lower-income families who reside here. I also want to speak on behalf of my family, who, until we moved to Sims Berry, has lived much of more economically diverse communities. Such diversity leads to richness and vitality to community life that, that would benefit Sims Berry, make us a stronger and more attractive community to many. First Church is a member of the Greater Hartford Interfaith Action Alliance, G H I A A, an organization of over forty faith communities, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, urban, suburban, black, white, brown, prosperous and struggling. We have a G H I A A core team at First Church comprised of fifteen of our members who are committed to advancing affordable housing in Sims Berry. Some will testify at Tuesday's Planning Commission meeting. We are committed to being more visible and committed partner in our efforts to bring more truly affordable housing to Sims Berry. Thank you for your commitment and good work. This is the Reverend George Harris, Senior Minister of First Church. The next is an email that's from Rick Collins. I want to share my view of what I believe is an important step, next step for the Planning Commission, a reexamine, reexamination of access to affordable housing for people interested in moving to our fair town. Many people suggested that it's important for people to pull themselves up by their bootstraps to become successful in our country. Many people spend their professional lives giving people the tools to improve their lives. Sims Berry should be a town open to allowing people opportunities to improve themselves, and access to affordable housing will make that dream a reality. Our town could be a shining light on a hill, a true example of possibilities for people of all socioeconomic backgrounds to achieve the American dream. We only need people with vision and foresight to make these possibilities into realities. There's a strong impetus by many of our residents to make the American dream available. Please consider how Sims Berry can be a leader in this issue. And that's an email from Rick Collins. My last email here, it was from Wendy Helm Camp. I'm sorry if I, if I ruin the, the name, I'll, I have her address at the end. I want to start by saying that I listened to some of the commission's recorded meetings, and you were developing the plan, and wanted to acknowledge the effort and hard conversations that went into developing the Affordable Housing Plan. My comments are more general than specific, and build on the comments that you've received during your first listening session. Now, while you're working on this plan, the Sims Berry Board of Selectmen passed a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. The essence of this resolution is to advance the racial equality in our town in part by setting goals, establishing policies that dismantle systematic racism in health, housing, education, food security, and criminal justice. The resolution can be found on the Spirit Council page on the town website. My hope is you, you will revisit the Affordable Housing Plan with the lens and added explicit intention to address systematic racism in housing in Sims Berry. For instance, given that Sims Berry is ninety percent white, the goal referenced being, in the very beginning of the plan, to maintain and enhance the safe, health, aesthetic, and distinctive living environment in Sims Berry comes across an implicit code words to keep the town white. While it's highly subjective language that requires greater understanding about the message it sends, the choices about housed, housing that it re-infers. When white people are confronted with the evidence of structural racism, a common response is, I don't care. I, I didn't create these policies, so I'm not to blame. My intention here is not to blame anyone, only to raise awareness because once made aware, a new choice emerges, which is to do something about it. I do not have specific suggestions for the plan, as I am not a housing expert. However, I would encourage you to seek out resources from those who are focusing on the issues such as desegregate Connecticut. Kind regard, Wendy Helm Camp, forty-eight Wing Gate, Sims Berry. That's all I have for written comments.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Very good. Okay, so let's, let's move into the live action here. Kristen, are you ready to share your views with us?
I am ready.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am also going to read from my written notes. It will keep me on track. As I have a, an audience in front of me, I tend to get off track, so I'd just like to stay on track. I am a member of the recently formed Sims Berry Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition. We are made up of members, many of whom are here today who will speak, of local groups such as Holding the Door Open, Sims Berry Diversity and Inclusion Working Group, and First Church Sims Berry. We know that children who grow up with ethnic, socioeconomic ability and generational diversity via fellow students, educators, shopkeepers, and neighbors grow into adults who see these types of diversity as normal and welcoming. Creating an environment of inclusion fosters diversity, not the other way around. Within our group, we are exploring various affordable housing options. One, such as the Toronto model, which Danielle Hill made reference to last week, or two weeks ago, is a neighborhood complex of multi-unit socioeconomic housing that creates a community feel with condominiums, townhomes, cooperatives, low-income, and multi-generational housing, a pipeline of different types of housing that creates a strong, more diverse community. I lived in Toronto, and for eight years I lived in a neighborhood that was the first of its kind in Canada, getting its planning start in the early nineteen seventies. This model has been a model that has been replicated throughout Toronto to this day and Canada over the years. It has been a living neighborhood for forty years and has seen roughly four generations of family growing up within its boundaries. It is on forty-four acres of previously industrial and underutilized land. It is seventy percent residential, with some shops on the ground floor. It has eighteen percent of the space made up as parks and twelve percent roads. It is comprised of thirty-nine percent condominiums, thirty percent nonprofit cooperatives, twenty-seven percent municipal, nonprofit, non-market rental, and four percent ownership townhomes. This means that you have people living there who are professionals, such as lawyers, doctors, and principals, people who are on fixed income, such as retired, or those on disability, and those who pay geared-to-income rent. I had neighbors who were ethnically diverse, neighbors with disabilities, who are able to live with dignity within the community, neighbors who were younger and older, neighbors who were picking themselves up after life dealt them a catastrophe, and those who were successful members of the business community. Many of my neighbors fit into one or many of these categories. The neighborhood has three schools, a large centrally-located park with fountains, a play area for children, a basketball court, a promenade for walking. There is a young people's theater, a community center, a few places of worship, a supermarket, a convenience store, a dry cleaner, and a few restaurants. There's also very little crime in this neighborhood. At night, although it is a downtown centrally-located neighborhood in Toronto, it's very quiet. I believe this neighborhood was and is successful because there is a real sense of inclusion across ethnicities, abilities, and socioeconomic levels. Inclusion built a sense of responsibility within the Cuban community. Neighborhood looks out for neighbor, and most everyone looks out for the community. My best friend and her family, newly emigrated to Canada, were the first tenants to move to the neighborhood in the late nineteen seventies. Her mom and dad moved there when their two children were very young. Now, my best friend's children, who are in their late teens, are embarking upon the next stage of their lives, college. My best friend, who was a single parent, was able to complete her master's degree in education because she could afford to live in peer-to-income housing within the cooperative in a richly diverse downtown neighborhood with greater employment opportunities. And now she can afford to send her two children to college to ensure their success. This Toronto model is an example of how we create generationally safe and inclusive neighborhoods that promote a transfer of wealth and success to the next generation, no matter one station in life or circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Very nice. Okay, next, Kevin Kurian. Am I, am I pronouncing your last name right?
You got the name perfectly, so thank you.
Thanks, okay, the, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you so much, Bill. Hey, everyone, my name is Kevin Kurian, and I'm a nineteen-year-old college student who's lived in Sims Berry for all of my life. I'm joined today by local organizing groups such as Holding the Door Open and the Sims Berry Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition, and statewide ones like Desegregate CT. First of all, thank you for the members of the Planning Commission, Mike Liddon, Bill Rice, and so many others for having us here tonight to have a spirited discussion about affordable housing. Now, I'm, I'm glad that so many of our community leaders recognize this affordability crisis and recognize that it is, in fact, a crisis. You know, I, I firmly believe that in this country, nobody should have to leave their hometown to achieve success. You know, as a result, I believe that no young person who calls Sims Berry their home should have to leave in order to achieve the American dream. You know, this goal is not currently a reality within our community. There's a lot of talk among my generation that Sims Berry is not for young people. While I plan on coming home after finishing my education and serving however I can, in addition to Akish Kaz, who was also speaking this evening, I want you to know that this goal is not necessarily held by other graduates of our amazing high school, Sims Berry High School. Looking at the housing affordability crisis in our town, I don't blame them for holding this belief. As we mentioned earlier, less than five percent of housing stock in Sims Berry is, at present, considered affordable, according to state data from two thousand and fifteen. Recent college graduates simply cannot afford to live in our town. Our beautiful town is not a present estate, a, a place where lots of young people can affordably start families. To my understanding, General Statute eight thirty G specifies that ten percent of a town's housing stock needs to be set aside as affordable. You know, this, this affordable housing plan only proposes a one percent increase over five years, or in other words, ninety units by two thousand and twenty-five. To better meet the goals of this general statute, we ought to be talking about building almost five hundred units by two thousand and twenty-five. I know that we can do better and that we can aim higher. In fact, there's a cap of six hundred square feet on accessory dwelling units. In layman's terms, this artificially limits the size of potential apartments. You know, Farmington, in contrast, has a cap of nine hundred square feet. You know, the affordable housing that we build in our community should be reasonably spacious for the benefit of future residents, and also so that we can one-up Farmington. You know, if we want young people to move to this town, we should consider significantly increasing that cap so their apartments can be of a decent and comfortable size. We've also got to think about changing our zoning laws so that multi, multifamily properties can be built. You know, the, the fifth plank of the two thousand and seventeen plan was, in fact, written as follows. Consider allowing two-family dwelling units by special permit in appropriate locations where public water and sewers are available. I think that we've reached a time where we ought to do more than just consider whether these developments should be built. Let's just go and do it. The benefits of multifamily units are clear. When these properties are constructed near public transit, they're of great benefit to the environment. Some studies even suggest that these units increase property value. You know, changing our planning and zoning regulations to allow for multifamily units is a win for current and future residents of our great town. You know, I, I think it's also important to note, as Kirsten did, that Sims Berry needs to be a multi-generational community. The Sims Berry Plan of Conservation Development calls for the creation of smaller homes that can serve as starter homes for young people, as, as well as places for seniors to move. Our Affordable Housing Plan does not address that goal. One governmental roadblock to the construction of smaller homes is minimum lot sizes. You know, our Affordable Housing Plan must propose that we can further subdivide lots so young people and seniors alike can live within, within comfort within our community, as they did in Kirsten's old hometown. We also have to start thinking long-term. You know, the lack of diversity in our town is, as mentioned by somebody in a previous public comment, as well as the affordability crisis warrant a plan that is larger in length than five years. We should articulate a housing plan that's greater in length and ambition. You know, there, there is more I could talk about. From adopting form-based codes for areas outside of downtown to actual places we could pursue development, but what I really want to stress is that the affordable, the affordability crisis is an existential threat for Sims Berry. I don't know that this Affordable Housing Plan, noble as it is, necessarily treats it as one. You know, Desegregate CT, a statewide organization, offers lots of resources and proposals for how to do affordable housing and rezoning in an effective and equitable way. You know, their website can be found at desegregatect.org, and I'd be happy to connect anyone on the Planning Commission who's interested in hearing their perspective to leaders of the group. Here's the deal. If young people don't start moving here, in fifty years, we will be a shadow of the town we are now. We need to take advantage of the optic and interests surrounding Connecticut and immediately diversify the types of housing structures that we allow in our community. You know, if we do, I know that when my hair has gone from black to gray, I'll be able to walk with my kids and grandkids down Hot Med to go grab a bite at Anna's Kitchen. And we're all here as one community right now, and we ought to take the next steps together by making revisions to this current plan or writing a new plan altogether. And believe me, there are many community groups in this call and outside of the call, they'd be happy to take that next step with you together. Let's start building a more Let's start building a more diverse and affordable community for generations to come. Let's make sure Simsbury is a place where people can find success for them and their families without having to leave. Let's get to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Robert Patricelli or Patricelli? I apologize. Which one is it?
It's Patricelli.
Okay. Yep, it's all you.
Shall I introduce myself? Ladies and gentlemen, Bob Patricelli, longtime resident of Simsbury. I want to start by saying I want to associate myself with Kevin's comments. He is that persuasive at nineteen. I want her to live long enough to hear him at thirty-five. Kevin did a wonderful job. And I want to thank the volunteers, the volunteer members of the Planning Commission as well, who serve, obviously, without compensation. Spend a lot of time with you. We're all dependent upon your wisdom and your energy. I bring, I hope so, an experience on at least three counts to this discussion. First, I spent a year and a half as co-chair of the State Creative Commission on fiscal stability and economic growth with Jim Smith of Western Bennett. And I have a pretty intimate knowledge of the problems that this has had in Connecticut, including economic growth. And one of the best means of rekindling economic growth in our state is to create the kind of communities that Kevin was talking about. They're appealing to young people and economically and visually can be attractive to young people. I'm also a member of the Capital Region Development Authority, which uses state bond funds to develop housing in the city of Hartford and the immediate contiguous towns. And when we do affordable housing through CRVA, our target for the affordable quotient is twenty percent. So take, for example, 777 Main Street in downtown Hartford. Some of you will remember it.
Excuse me, I don't know. It might just be my system, but I'm having a hard time hearing you, Robert.
Yeah, me too.
I was having that difficulty.
Yeah.
Same here.
I'm sorry. Let me try to be a little closer to the screen. How's this?
Much better. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for interrupting. So I was talking about the CRVA's twenty percent target for affordable in its projects. And 777 Main Street, a major condo development in the old Hartford National Bank Building, has twenty percent affordable units. And you look at that building, you think that's an upscale development. And the people in it don't know who the twenty percent folks are that are getting subsidies to live in the affordable units. It works. It works. There's no tipping point, at least at the twenty percent range, that would drag down a developer's ambitions. The third point of reference I have is that I own and live on Folly Farm. And we provide affordable housing on a hundred and eighty acres of farmland. He's Simsbury, but let me give you three recommendations that comes out of this patchwork of experience. First of all, I'm not comfortable with the way we're counting affordable units. We have nine dwelling units on Folly Farm. Two of them are upscale for my family, my daughter's separate house. But four of them are occupied by farmhands, and three of them are rental units at a thousand dollars a month. Certainly affordable, and they are one-to-four-bedroom apartments. I don't think they're counted. I think certainly the ones that are occupied by our people of color, farmhands, aren't counted either. So I'm over my head on this, but maybe we need a better accounting of all of the privately-held units in the town to know really what we've got. Secondly, I want to urge you to be much bolder. Our target ought to be something like fifteen percent affordable, not ten. And counted is the way I describe it, not limited to units that are described in the statute, which strikes me as very arbitrary and artificial. And we ought to, you ought to be as bold as you can be and propose an aspirational plan for us to get to a much bigger number. And third, I would ask you to think hard about a particular initiative vis-à-vis immigrant communities. Connecticut is a great state for immigrants. And all four of my grandparents were immigrants to this country. This is what we're going to see more of and what we need. And I think it would be very exciting if we contemplate a, at scale, opportunity to rehouse new immigrants to the United States in Simsbury and give them the benefit of our school system and our way of life. So please be bold, and we'll ride to support.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, next, we'll hear from Ellen. And Ellen, is it Cresco, Cresco, something else?
Cresco is good, Bill. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, you're on.
Okay, thanks. And I also want to thank Mike for having given us the overview that he did at the beginning. It's a complicated topic, and I know he tried to make it easy for us. And like Bob, I want to thank Kevin for participating and for sharing both a younger perspective and a longer view of the opportunities that are presented in this plan. I think all of that is tremendous. My wife, Becky, and I have lived here in Simsbury for about fifteen years now. Both of our sons went to Simsbury High School. We love the community, and we really enjoy the people in our community. I retired as general counsel of the Hartford about five years ago, and I've devoted much of my retirement time to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Hartford, which serves about a third of Hartford's kids. One of the most gratifying moments of those five years has been the creation of our first suburban support group. And I'm very, very proud to say that that first suburban support group is here in Simsbury. We approached about thirty town residents to serve on a committee that would help us identify new opportunities for Hartford kids. Nearly everybody that we asked said yes. I think one person declined because of other commitments. The first focus of the committee was helping Hartford. But the committee also identified a second goal, and that was enabling multicultural experiences for Simsbury's youth through joint activities with Hartford's kids. That second goal recognized that diversity benefits our community. Increasing affordable housing in Simsbury is an important part of promoting multicultural experience and its richness. It will benefit our children, who will live and work in a much more diverse America when they finish their schooling here. It will make us a more attractive community to people moving to the area who seek diversity. And very importantly, it will benefit people of color who have for far too long been frozen out of suburban communities by explicit or implicit restrictions. I really appreciate all of the work that goes to the draft plan. I'm not an expert, but like Bob, I want to offer several general comments. First, as a general matter, my wife and I strongly endorse enabling more affordable housing in Simsbury. We endorse the objectives of having affordable housing available for seniors and for first-time homeowners. But the plan should include an explicit statement that an additional objective is creating a more diversified and inclusive community. Nearly every major company in the United States, certainly those here in Hartford, like The Hartford, Travelers, Aetna, and Cigna, have all issued public statements on the value of diversity and have developed specific programs to promote diversity in their workforce, in their boardroom, and among their customers. We in Simsbury should do the same thing. The plan should include an explicit statement that this is one of our objectives. Second, like Bob again, I find the plan's goal of a one percent increase in affordable housing over five years to be under ambitious. The state's requirement is ten percent. That should be the minimum that we seek to achieve in order to give us maximum flexibility as we develop our housing plans. So we would support a more ambitious goal. While the plan focuses on General Statute 830-G, and I understand that was the task of this committee, we should not, as a town, be limited in our thinking by the state's definition of affordability. We can meet the state's requirements and expand opportunity to live here by building to lower income thresholds than the floors set in the state statute. We're glad to see the endorsement of accessory apartments and would suggest adding two-to-four-unit small-scale development that can promote diversity as well. I really appreciate all of the work that the committee has done, the attention you're devoting to this important issue. We hope you and the rest of our town government continues to keep the public engaged in the process and is bold in its thinking about the issue. Thanks very much, Bill.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you very much. Okay, next, Wendy McStudis.
Thanks, Bill, for pronouncing my name correctly.
Okay, great.
Unlike Nancy Yanopoulos.
I'll get it right next.
Okay, so I'm, you know, everybody that's spoken before me, I feel has done such a great job. I'm going to kind of wing it and reach up from my notes here. But first, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission and for Mike for coming to the Board of Selectmen meeting last night and to present us with the first affordable housing plan by this committee. I've been a member of, I'm a new member of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm a longtime thirty-two-year resident of Simsbury. And I understand that this has taken a lot of work of this team and the value that it holds for our town. So first, I'm going to just speak quickly on the outcome from the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We had an agenda item, which we finally got raised to the top after coming to the meeting last time, where it kind of fell through our cracks. So we got it as a legitimate agenda item. And the board, you know, there are differing views on different places, but we did look at the action items and came to consensus on a few things that we can look at and tackle right away. One of them is looking at the policy that requires, would require deed restrictions around tax sales of properties. So if there's a tax sale, we could potentially have it at the affordable housing level and attach the deed restriction so that it would qualify for the ten percent, even though that's a medium weight on the action item. And then there was also some excitement about pursuing this Small Cities Grant Program that's mentioned in there on page nine, that was around in the eighties, which encourages reinvestment and rehab of properties for low-to-moderate-income individuals with some sort of financing break. And so from that, that's what came out of the Board of Selectmen meeting, and I'm just going to talk kind of on my own now. So I've had some friends and constituents, which are friends that are now constituents, that they've made it clear that they want to live in a town that welcomes residents, new residents, and can keep the current residents here, and that we hope to be able to embrace people of different ages, ethnicities, people with disabilities, and different income levels so that we build this more inclusive and diverse community. I grew up in Bloomfield. I went to Bloomfield High School, which was a very diverse environment. I had an ABC student live with us when my son was in high school, a person of color with a twin brother, and they flourished in town by going to the high school. So whether this means, it seems like it means affordable housing right now because that's where all this emphasis has come, based on the things that have happened this year that have kind of opened all of our eyes. And so there is this impetus towards affordable housing. So one of the things that I find confusing, and it would be nice if the plan could, you know, explore or kind of define, is the difference between affordable housing as far as 830-G goes and then what is naturally occurring affordable housing, which we seem to have quite a bit of in town, homes that meet this threshold but just don't qualify for the ten percent and have this deed restriction, which is still a good thing because people can still come to town and buy these homes, and it doesn't qualify. So it would just be interesting to know how that's defined and where we break that out because it's still good that we have homes that are affordable to others. But we are striving to meet this ten percent goal also. So to me, that needs to be clarified somewhere. And also, there is some talk that these, you know, natural homes, oh, well, you know, those are just as good and they don't meet the ten percent. And so it's hard to see what the benefits, this deed restriction keeps getting brought up, that it's detrimental. Yet I think there are some positives to the ten percent-defined affordable housing that should be, you know, played up for people who don't see it as a benefit. And, you know, they get, your taxes aren't going to grow up because your property value is not going to increase. You're still building equity in a property. Anybody who buys into an affordable home is still going to build a credit score. And at the end of that, they'll be able to pass along this affordable house to somebody else because the, you know, the price is going to have to stay at a certain level. So I also kind of a little disappointed in the one percent over five years. I was surprised when Danielle last week thought it was one percent a year over, or something, yeah, five, whatever. And it was, you know, so that was kind of one percent per year for the five years. So anyhow, I just think that's something that maybe we could look into. And I do want to say that as far as the next steps go, I assume the Planning Commission is going to move forward on these action items. But given the amount of information I'm hearing tonight from all these people and the amount of detail and data that may be needed to go into this, that we may need some resources attached to this and that we look to potentially a task force, advisory group, subcommittee, whatever it's called, to work together to flush out this plan, add some data metrics, such as who wants to move to Simsbury? Like, are there people out there that want to move here? What's the demand for this market? You know, is there, do we have a quantitative study of the housing that's available? And what kind of opportunities are coming up in town today? So that's something the Planning Commission needs to decide. But I just want to say, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I would be happy and in favor of supporting this kind of effort if it comes to us. That's it.
Thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, Akash Kazza.
Yeah, great. So I just want to introduce myself. My name's Akish Kazza, and I've lived in town since I was three years old. I want to thank the Simsbury Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition as well and Kirsten for her work here and what she's kind of helped us address with this. And I want to thank everybody who's been out here. Ten people commenting on this meeting, I think, is really incredible and shows that people care about this issue. Also want to thank the speakers before me who have, you know, really delved into the weeds of a lot of the data here. I just want to personally talk about my own story in Simsbury. When my parents brought me to Simsbury, I was three years old, and my first real memories were on the second floor of our apartment in Canal Place. Then we moved to a duplex off Hot Meadow, right by Big Sky. And I recall the diversity of my neighborhood, senior citizens living adjacent to young couples and families. Then when I was in elementary school, we moved two blocks away from central school after we saved up, and we moved into a new development on Avery Way. And when I left for college, we went right back to the duplex. To me, this shows the new track for middle and working-class families in towns like Simsbury. People want flexibility in housing like never before. Empty nesters want a place to downsize while staying in their community. Young people want an affordable place where they can start their lives with easy access to entertainment and public transportation. And working families, whether they're coming from eight miles down the road or eight thousand, want good public schools that they can send their kids to. Like Kevin said, young adults don't really see a path in Simsbury or in Connecticut because the suburbs in which they were raised don't really give us a real reason to stay. There are some jobs in Hartford. There are some jobs in Hartford and New Haven for them, but unless they live in the cities themselves or in West Hartford, there's really no appeal. There aren't many places for us to live. And in the few places that do exist, there's limited access to good public transportation. And it's, it's really just not designed in a way that is attractive to us. Now, if we were to make sure that there were attractive places for our town's college graduates to stay, the likelihood that we stay here to build our lives and our families would skyrocket. Now, I'm coming back from some work in Phoenix where I basically lived in a casita for months. Just about every other place in suburban Phoenix has an accessory dwelling unit, and it works out really well. We don't have to call them casitas in Simsbury. But as Kevin said, we have silly regulations on these sorts of units that don't really serve any real purpose besides reducing our supply for affordable housing. To sum it up, I like that we're talking about affordable housing. I really do appreciate the Planning Committee coming here with a proposal. But first off, I think we need to fix those cumbersome zoning regulations like with accessory dwelling units. But most importantly, we need more synergy. We need an affordable housing plan that's welcoming to all three demographics I've talked about. We need to create pipelines that diversify housing so people can stay here all their lives from when they start their careers till well past retirement, just like my parents did. This plan does a great job, but like Wendy Helmkamp said, we need to be mindful of diversity here. We need plans that recognize the intersectionality of housing inequality. It's not just about socioeconomic status. There are clear gaps in racial equity. And that's something that I think we really need to include in our plans and in our, in our proposals here. And we need to recognize the need for businesses and amenities that make those neighborhoods that we create compelling to the very people we're trying to attract and, and get to stay here. Now, when I hear arguments against affordable housing, I can't really accept them. Obviously, we can't just cut into some of our public land and carve out forests for housing. That's not necessarily a good idea for our town, and it would put affordable housing in more remote parts of Simsbury. But we absolutely can find more places by Hot Meadow and on CT transit lines that are perfect locations for affordable housing for working families and young people who we've often left behind in these decision-making processes. But the people who say we need to preserve the character of our town are wrong. Because if it wasn't for this town's all-too-limited cheaper apartments, two immigrants from India wouldn't have found a home here. They wouldn't have raised an Indian-American kid here and sent him to these amazing public schools. My dad wouldn't have run in the municipal elections last year. My family realized the American dream here because there was affordable housing and cheaper apartments in this town. So when I say, when I see people saying we shouldn't have affordable housing, they're shutting the door on stories like ours. There is so much for this town to gain when we have socioeconomic and identity diversity. But it's more than that. It's really just the right thing to do. It's what this country was founded upon, that everyone has an opportunity to pursue the American dream. We shouldn't see this as, let's hit an arbitrary state mandated benchmark because this is a chance to do the right thing and improve our community at the same time. I look at Simsbury and I think about my 13 years in public schools here, learning about skills like leadership and innovation. It's those parts of me that say, why can't we take the initiative and be one of the first suburbs to really address housing inequity in Connecticut and push the envelope? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Okay, next up, Danielle Hill.
Hello, everybody, again.
Hi, Danielle.
Nice to see you all. Um, I know that I tucked your brains out two weeks ago, so I'll keep it pretty brief. So since we last spoke, like, you know, Kirsten, Kevin, and, you know, and Akash already mentioned that we have developed a, a kind of coalition based on affordable housing. So that is the Simsbury Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition. And what we're doing so far is brainstorming all of these ideas on how affordable housing can be a real option for, for you all and then for our municipal government to, to put into practice and put in place here. And based on the, on the specifics of the plan that, you know, that is put out right now, I do think that we need to remove that coded language that, you know, is, you know, the character of the town and because that reads as, we want to keep this as a white, middle-class, upper-middle-class town. And that is the opposite of what we really need to be doing here. I think that that language is, it's off-putting for people who would be looking to come into this town. If we're always saying we need to preserve our character, that isn't, you know, it doesn't read as that. It reads as we need to stay really white here. And what we need to do is build our character and build it to include people of different races, cultural backgrounds, religions, ability statuses, et cetera. And I think that we also can take advantage of this very exciting time where we, where we're looking at the language and the policies being put forth by our president-elect and our vice president-elect and how they are responding to issues around racial justice because that is also a big factor here. Being in a town that's, you know, over 90% white is problematic. It makes it so people don't want to move here who are of color or from different cultural backgrounds. And then at the same time, we're seeing, you know, these public health crises, crises, excuse me. So we're seeing, you know, racial inequity as a public health crisis. And then we also have the coronavirus crisis, pandemic crisis. That's leading to a lot of job loss, myself included, and leading small businesses to close. And people are having a hard time staying afloat. So if we created substantial affordable housing, that would provide opportunity for the people who have lost their jobs due to COVID, the people who have had to close down their small businesses due to COVID. And these folks who are really suffering because they are, there's no control over this right now. And it's impossible to control, and we're looking into the future that is, you know, maybe another six months, a year, who knows how long of this, you know, of our meetings looking like this. So if we had substantial affordable housing, people who have been negatively impacted financially by this pandemic would be able to support themselves. And they'd be able to pour more money into our local and then our state economy. And we all know that that's been a mess for a long time. So I really, I think that there's a lot of excitement around this. And I think that, that Mr. Petroselli made it really, really clear is that we need to please be bold. And, and that's really the bottom line. And then just another suggestion is it might be beneficial to, you know, as we see these young people, like Kevin and Akash saying what they believe is, would be appropriate for, for their futures. What if we held a meeting with some of the youths in the community? And from adjoining communities like Canton and Bloomfield and Granby? And see what they, what they want for their future in this town? You know, so what if somebody from Bloomfield says, oh, I'd like to live in Simsbury because of the schools, but I can't? Let's, let's brainstorm with the youths who are in our town, in our region, in our communities. Because we are in a really, really wonderful space where our high schoolers, our middle schoolers are really harnessing the power that they have in putting it into practice, whether that be online or in-person and community organizing. It's, it's really a beautiful thing to see our youths doing that. I know I didn't do that when I was 17, 18 years old, but they, they are. And we have a lot to learn from them. So thank you all for listening again.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, next, we have Mario Trupetti.
Yes, thank you, Bill. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you all this evening. I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Simsbury and as a member of a group of First Church members advocating for affordable housing. Before I begin, I would like to thank you all for your hard work in drafting this Affordable Housing Plan. I know it has taken several meetings and many hours outside of these committee meetings to arrive where we are today. My family and I have been residents of Simsbury for 20 years. But prior to our move, I had visited Simsbury several times since 1986, when I used to visit Executive Risk when it first set up shop in town. I had always remarked to my wife how beautiful the town and area were and never thought that we would one day settle here. While I know that the main impetus for the Affordable Housing Plan is to respond to the Connecticut State statutes, I do believe that the issues we are trying to address, such as affordable housing for seniors and first-time homebuyers, are issues we should be reviewing even without the statute in mind. If we limit ourselves to just meeting the affordability requirements of the statute, we will have lost the opportunity to make broader changes to meet current needs. We need to think more broadly about using this opportunity to design a plan that encourages the building of affordable housing units in order to create a more diversified and inclusive community from which we can all benefit and which includes housing for individuals and families with lower incomes and different backgrounds. We need to think creatively about how housing funding, vouchers, subsidies, or property tax reform can assist us. As Desegregate Connecticut clearly states on its website, "To desegregate Connecticut, we must overhaul our land use laws within the existing state-local framework to be more inclusive by design. We must expand housing diversity. We must increase housing supply, and we must improve processes that thought of good development." With respect to comments relating to the Town of Simsbury Affordable Housing Plan, here are my specific comments and questions. I apologize in advance if I make a mistake with any of these comments or questions as I'm still trying to become familiar with our local laws and requirements. One, what is the expected date and process for this plan to be completed and approved? Two, what role does the Board of Selectmen play and what role would you like them to play once this plan is approved? I note that there are several recommended actions that require multiple town committees and bodies to work together. Who will be leading these task forces to closure? I also note that we have target completion dates set for 2022 to 2024, some of which are high priority. Can't these completion dates be moved up? If Simsbury needs to ensure that 10% of all housing units are deemed affordable per the statute, which means that we need to have an additional 481 units by the end of the five-year period, why do we only have a goal of 1%? Why can't we strive for a larger goal? The Affordable Housing Plan calls for accessory apartments. I believe there presently is a 600-square-foot cap on these types of units. Couldn't we have a goal that also investigates removing the requirement that they be part of a main house while also increasing the size of these units, so that these units are more livable? The plan also calls for the promotion of starter housing for first-time homebuyers or step-down housing for seniors. Where would this goal be located within the action items? Are our minimum lot requirements or restrictions on subdivisions hindrances to creating this type of housing? And finally, will the Planning Committee, the Planning Commission, or any other town organization firmly state that they will not request that the state grant the town a moratorium with respect to reaching the 10% minimum requirement? I realize that we will not have time to have these questions answered tonight, but I do hope they will be addressed. As stated earlier, this is an opportune time to think creatively and boldly as we develop an Affordable Housing Plan. Let's not restrict ourselves to a specific statute. Let's think about how we can make Simsbury the model town for all the other towns in Connecticut. If not now, then when? Thank you very much for giving me the time to talk to you tonight.
Thank you, Mario. Thank you. Okay, next, Nancy Yanopoulos. Nancy, you're there. You're on mute. Yeah.
There I am, sorry.
There you are.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the time to speak. I'm a member of First Church of Christ and Simsbury and serve on our Board of Mission and Outreach, also here as a member of GIA, Greater Hartford Action Alliance, and Simsbury Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition. As a member of the community, I do strongly support affordable housing in Simsbury so we can attract new residents who can afford to live here, return, retain current residents, and also accommodate for the needs of elderly and disabled. Our town has amazing things to offer, one of the best places to live. And I believe we need to ensure that we are offering these resources to a diverse and inclusive committee, community. I highly recommend forming a housing needs and planning ad hoc group that can address our Affordable Housing Plan, the one that you have all worked so hard on in these past several months, which can research actual needs, including rentals versus single-family housing, mixed-use, accessory dwellings, multifamily units, and other ways to provide housing as needed. It would be helpful to further define how we do or don't meet the mandated affordable housing goal based on definitions of affordable, including deed restrictions, the things that have been mentioned by many others, and what other government assistance and support is available. This group could receive input from a growing number of very energized community groups and use resources from state agencies, including housing advocacy groups. The Planning Needs Ad Hoc Group could research and promote actual sites for affordable housing, taking into consideration all of our possible resources, our current housing stock, our Main Street plans, transportation considerations, open space, and architectural considerations. This would help achieve concrete, positive outcomes, help market our housing offerings to residents of Simsbury and residents of other towns, entice them to move here, attract new residents to our town, and using best practices that will help Simsbury stand out as another example of why it's so great to live in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate the input. Okay, I think Shannon Noll is still on the line here. Shannon?
Hi. I've written so many notes all over my original notes that I might be like all over the place. But thank you all for participating in this discussion tonight and allowing this very critical public input. For anyone who knows me, you may be familiar with my work as an advocate for those with autism and disabilities. I am also a member of the Simsbury Inclusive Neighborhood Development Group that was mentioned earlier, Autism Speaks, and I serve on the Aging and Disability Commission. My introduction to anything related to autism and disabilities was really the result of my son, Jack, and his diagnosis of autism. And my purview most often comes from his perspective. And my purview most often comes from his perspective. Of wanting what any nineteen year old wants independence, employment, happiness and life. And since his diagnosed fifteen diagnosis fifteen years ago, I have been advocating for. Appropriate services interventions deployment and housing. And he is now nineteen. And we've reached critical mass on how he moves forward. Affordable housing can look different for everyone, but here's what affordable housing looks like for us. Access to employment opportunity, transportation. Access to community interactions and housing that is afforded through minimum or subminimum wage. While Simsbury has affordable housing options, none of them meet all of these criteria for us. And while I support affordable housing initiatives completely. The ones that are in place right now are isolating. And it is no small wonder that the market is in perceived limited demand. It's like offering candy to a child, but putting the candy in the middle of a vegetable patch. While we allow accessory dwelling units of six hundred square feet, which is a step, they do not capture the inclusive needs of the disability community. These units also do not foster long term independence as the as this particular model encourages reliance on aging parents. And I think Simsbury needs some help in moving forward. And would like to see the establishment of a task force. Which includes stakeholders such as seniors, people with disabilities. And many members who have spoken here tonight, I think, are on the. Are on the front lines of moving this sort of initiative forward. But I would like the town to entertain the idea of having a consultant. Who specializes in the development of affordable and inclusive housing. I think we need to take a deep dive into a long term plan that will be sustainable for all of our residents. Now and in the future, we have great opportunity to be a leader here in Connecticut and nationally, but I think we need to get our arms around some very broad issues. This will not be solved overnight. But it seems that our current plan is just to say not here or not there. Which leaves us in a place of not serving the people we are aiming to serve and frankly makes us look as if we are ignoring the issue as a whole. And I certainly know that we are better than that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Shannon, and and thank thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. This is, you know, valuable input for the commission and we we have. You know, I think we have some. Discussions to to take up within the commission. There was one question, I think, earlier, maybe Mario had touched on it. When when do we plan to? Issue issue the Affordable Housing Plan and we 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 don't have a solid date. The target was the end of the year. It's to be honest with you, it's going a little slower than we had originally thought and. To consider a number or all of the the inputs tonight is going to take a considerable effort. So I I can't answer the question as to when we plan to to issue it to issue at this point.
Thank you, Bill. I I understand. I appreciate that.
Okay, again, commissioners, any any quick comments that you want to share with other commissioners and or the. People who shared their their viewpoints tonight?
I took some notes. So the character of the town, I don't remember that that was in the Affordable Housing Plan. Did we put that in?
No, I think it's an excerpt from the P O C D.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I was getting a little confused there because I was like, that's not in our plan. And the point of that. I understand how it could be interpreted that way, but when we were talking about character. Of the town in the P O C D, it was how to keep the town rural, how to keep. You know, like big boxes from coming in and changing the it it really did not have to do. So I just want to put that out there that that wasn't the intent. Having worked on the P O C D longer than we did the Affordable Housing. That was absolutely not the intent and I'm it. It kind of bothered me that it was interpreted that way because that was not the intent. It was really more about the. Small town character. We talk about being more inclusive in the P O C D and the character of the town was really. How do we prevent from becoming a blue back square kind of thing? So I I just wanted to point that out because that really was not the point of the Affordable Housing Plan, so. And also, I I I loved the comments. I I just wanted to give some feedback that. The the point of this Affordable Housing Plan is so specific. That I think though they were great suggestions, I'm not sure that. The flavor of the plan is going to be able to incorporate everything. That everyone said because it's it's not. By law, the intent, you know what I mean? So I I and maybe that's something for the commissioners to take up. How do we? How do we do that? So I that's just. My and I know there was talking about rezoning and all of that, and that wouldn't be part of this plan, I don't believe. I mean, we'd have to go into, you know, get zoning involved and and so so I I just hope that people, as we discuss. We might be limited in what we can do as part of the eight thirty J and the eight thirty G. And so I just hope that people understand that because I. I think the what? What we're tasked to do by law in eight thirty G and eight thirty J. Ties our hands. And so I think the plan is it's not going to necessarily be the all encompassing thing that. We would like to see or that you guys would like to see. So I just hope that people really understand that. Aspect of what we're tasked with per those two laws, those statutes. So I I just wanted to. And I think somebody asked for clarification about the housing bill. How houses in the affordable range aren't considered affordable. Again, I think that goes back to the to the law. So I don't know if we want to address that because somebody did bring that up.
Yeah, I I don't want to. I don't want to delve into and trying to answer all the questions that may have been posed tonight, but. Yeah, it's it's I think it's. Valuable, a valuable comment, you know, why? Why aren't certain things counted? And we ask that of ourselves in the in the regular commission meetings, so. Such as such as us that are, you know, have that that feeling.
Bill, this is Dave Blooming, the box with no face on it. I'd just like to express more on behalf of, I think, all of the commissioners. The frustrations expressed by the speakers are also felt by the members of the commission. And these are items that in our previous meetings have been brought up and frustrated with many of the. Limitations and the and the challenges that are there. But I think that. Multiple speakers said be bold, and I believe the commission wants to be bold. I'll stop there.
Okay, I think, yeah, that's probably a good a good place to stop. So again, I'll thank everyone who spoke tonight. You are more than welcome to. Stay on the call and and watch the the rest of the commission activities. We will be. Reviewing the minutes from our last meeting and then taking up a referral from the Board of Selectmen. If you found that you find that exciting, please join. However, if if you have other things that you need to attend to that are a little more important, I I'm sure. That I and the rest of the commissioners will understand if you choose to to disconnect at this point.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, back to our agenda. So now we'll pick up the approval of the minutes from October twenty seventh. So, Mr. Secretary, could you lead us through that, please?
Okay, let's start with lines one through fifty-one. I. I see we solve the problem with all pages being numbered two. By not numbering any of which is a good solution. So lines one to fifty-one, does anybody have anything?
No, not for me.
Okay. Lines fifty-two to a hundred. I've got something if nobody else does.
I do. On line ninety? Susan Massino, M A S I N O.
That's the one I had too. Anything else? Okay, lines one oh one to one fifty.
On line one thirty-nine, I think wish should be wished. It should be E D, past tense.
Yeah.
Okay, line one thirty-nine wished past tense.
Okay, lines one fifty-one through two hundred.
Nothing for me.
Should be legislators. Oh, I'm sorry, one fifty-three. That would be helpful.
Yes, it should be.
Okay, yeah, legislators instead of legislatives.
Okay, and anything?
I think there should be a space between stand and alone, correct?
I'd have to look that one up.
Did you have to look that one up?
No, I I I would have to look it up.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I just bring it up because I thought it was. But anyway. I could go either way.
Okay, last page, line two oh one through two seventeen. That one's easy. Okay, Bill.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the October twenty-seventh twenty twenty meeting as amended?
So moved.
Okay, that was Erin. Is there a second?
Second.
Holly is is muted. That's why Holly, we're not getting.
Second by Holly, okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, we're going to pass unanimously six to nothing. Very good. Thanks. All right, now we have a referral from the Board of Selectmen. Mike, you kind of prepped us on this at one time. This is the Hendrix Lane Road Acceptance.
Quickly, I got a letter from Jeff Shay. I'll share with everyone right now. So. They've Hendrix Lane is is requested for acceptance of the public road. Jeff has been out there. He's recommending acceptance. With some caveats that, you know, we have a posting of one year maintenance bond of twenty-four thousand. We're going to be looking for electronic file for the roadway and lot geometry. And lastly. Just like how whenever we accept the roads, we're waiting on his deeds for roadway, utility, drainage and sewer easements. Other than that, there's no issues with with acceptance of this road. They follow the plans to the T.
Given that.
So I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
Is 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 Jeff recommending an acceptance or waiting until the three bullet items are satisfied?
He's he's recommending is if you go to his second paragraph there, therefore, based on a review of the work, I recommend approval and acceptance of the dedicated Hendrix Lane as a town highway.
Right, and then.
The rest of it. The bullet points, you know, this is just our usual, this is our the back end of the house. We always require maintenance bonds for for the roads. Because, you know, basically the 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 final pavement just went on this year, and that's guaranteeing the 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 pavement. Improvements are are satisfactory and don't. We have any issues for maintenance purposes, which were allowed by statute. And then the other two are the are the usual, we're just waiting on those those submissions. That wouldn't stop the Board of Selectmen from acting. Because right now Michael Mansour is working on getting his his bond to us. He's aware of this already. And along with the electronic. Data that that Jeff is requesting. The deeds that I know that his attorney and Bob DiCrescenzo have been discussing the deeds at this point. And I expect that that should be resolved.
So any motion doesn't have to include those as conditions?
No, you don't have to condition. Yeah, you don't have to condition that. But we wanted to make sure you're aware of where we stand entirely.
Mike, what what's the advantage of having the road accepted? Who does who does it? Who does it benefit?
Yeah, it's the residents right now, so that they they won't receive mail. Their garbage will not be picked up from their house. We we have a few people will be moving in out there. Once, once it becomes a public road, not only that, the road's plowed in the winter.
And maintained.
Right.
Well, maintained in the sense it's going to be plowed and, you know, treatment will be placed on it. Maintained in the sense related to construction. That's why we carry that bond. If something goes wrong with the physical pavement itself. The bond is pulled and they gotta, we make the repairs.
Yeah, but if it needs to be repaved in fifteen years, the town does that, correct?
Yeah, we're all we can only keep that bond for one year. That's kind of our assurance to say it's it was good workmanship out there.
Well, Bill, I don't see any reason not to bless this.
Well, you can make a motion, Alan.
Okay, there's no number associated with this, right, Mike?
No.
All right, then I move. We give a positive referral to from the regarding the Board of Selectmen referral to us on the Hendrix Lane Road Acceptance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Oh, just a second. Alan Alan made the motion. And Aaron seconded. Okay, discussion. Okay, so I I'm uncomfortable with the fact that the town engineer. In one paragraph says. I can't remember the words exactly, Mike, you've taken it down, but recommends approval of the road. And then in the in the following paragraph. Says that the acceptance will be, what's it say? Not contingent upon, but effective. Acceptance of the road would be effective upon. These three bullet items.
Isn't that just business as usual?
That's correct.
Why can't we wait till the three bullets are satisfied?
Because isn't this saying that it won't be approved until this is done anyway?
So so your role really in this is 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 strictly advisory. Was the road built per the plans? Yes. The the rest of this is is usually this is the housekeeping kind of business as usual, what we deal with and on. On on all the approved subdivisions. It's we haven't been doing this in a while. I mean, Murphy's turn was the last one and. Those three bullet items were were also done after this commission gave a positive referral for Murphy's turn.
I'm not so sure about that, Mike.
Bill, I would recommend that we that the motion be amended to include, you know, upon. Effect upon completion of these three items.
Well, that's what the letter says.
And I think I think our motion ought to be state the same thing. I I know it's housekeeping, but I think it is important housekeeping.
Well, then I'll withdraw my motion. Somebody else can bring a new one up if they like.
Well, Alan, wouldn't you just keep your motion if somebody wants to amend your motion? They can.
I'll withdraw my motion and somebody can make a new one if they like.
Go ahead, Craig.
I was just gonna say I'll make a motion that we, you know, pass forward a positive referral of this item. Subject to the conditions outlined in the letter. Before us here, including the acceptance terms that are bulleted here.
I'll second that motion.
Is that different than Alan's, though? How is that different than Alan's?
He included the three issues.
But he said it's stated in the letter. What he said is stated in the letter. Am I missing something? Okay.
It doesn't hurt to emphasize.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, so Craig, what is your motion? To send a positive referral?
Yes, to send a positive referral for this item as, you know, for, you know, for what's been outlined here before us and making, you know, making that positive referral contingent upon the acceptance conditions, those three bullet-pointed items that are listed in the third paragraph of the letter.
Okay. I think it's, Alan, that was exactly what you said, but... Okay, so any further discussion? All in favor of a positive referral referring to Jeff Shay's email from November 11th, 2020, inclusive of the acceptance bullet items? Please say aye.
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 Any against? I'm going to say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes, five to one to zero. Okay, very good. So Mike, you can pass that along to, I guess it's the Board of Selectmen. Okay, so I guess before we adjourn, Mike, any correspondence? Any potential applications in the wings? No?
No.
So, oh, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Erin.
So we're not going to have any discussion about what was discussed tonight?
Well, we can if you... Well, it's not on the agenda.
I would just think this would be part of the discussion, no? I mean, maybe, I'm just trying to look at the time, too.
Well, the intent was it not to have a listening session, so we just had a listening session. Okay, any discussion, I think we should review whatever notes we took, and we can put that on an agenda next time.
But no one wants to have any discussion when it's still right in our minds about, you know, just having listened to it? I...
Yeah, personally, I'm not, a lot was said tonight. I think I want to, I want to hold off making any comments until I have a little time to think about it.
That's how I feel, too.
Will be an agenda item on our next meeting?
Yes.
Your next meeting is in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
22nd, right? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
24, 24, yeah.
Could I suggest that, I mean, Erin has some thoughts on her mind right now. Can we give her the floor for a few minutes?
I'm not, nobody wants to do it. I'm fine with waiting.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, though, Craig. I appreciate that. At least a thank you.
Okay, that completes our agenda for the evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Craig has a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Alan seconded. All in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.